It's gonna be a fast fight under dogs in a week, just over a week. I guess under dogs.
Well, you don't. It's good to see you.
Friday is at noon, noon to about 5:30, and Saturday is 8 until about 4:00.
You're a heavy drinker today.
No, Saturday, Friday and Saturday are fun. So we go from the... Some of these people and go, and you think I would let you manage my money? Why?
I'm gonna go fast.
I mean, they're, we keep lists of the mechanics we don't want to go to, the lawyers we'll never go to, the financial planners we'll never go to.
Okay, good. So, most fun. But I'll get here and I'll look into the introductions. Here.
Agnambula. Oh, we had an enrollment management meeting today that I didn't bother to show up for. Okay.
John, you're tireless. God love you, you're tireless.
Deborah, I've lost my enthusiasm.
Yeah, that's the one I didn't notice. I wouldn't even have gone through.
And welcome to the November 2008 meeting of the Board of Trustees in the South Orange County Community College District. It is my pleasure to welcome you here, and as always, we will start with a report for our clerk as to items voted on in closed session.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. After today's earlier ceremony, this is the first public announcement I get to make in the Ronald Reagan Board of Trustees Room.
All right.
Ladies and gentlemen, on a five to two vote, with Trustees Jay and Milchaker casting negative votes, the Board approved the hiring of Dr. Randy Peebles as the Provost of the Advanced Technology and Education Park. That's the only matter that I have to report.
Chancellor Mather.
Thank you, President Wagner. It is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Peebles as the new Provost at ATEP. Dr. Peebles, if you would please stand, and let me give you some background information about him. Dr. Peebles has been appointed by the Board this evening as the new Provost at the Advanced Technology and Education Park. He earned his bachelor's degree in industrial arts from CSU Long Beach, master's degree in industrial education from CSU Long Beach, and his doctorate degree in higher education management from Pepperdine University in Malibu, and he has served as a Dean of Instructional Technology as well as business sciences at Saritows College. He has been a dean there for about 20 years. In fact, for a period of time, he also served as the executive dean. It is a delight to welcome Dr. Peebles as Provost of ATEP in the South Orange County Community College District. Welcome. (APPLAUSE). Dr. Peebles, I understand you have your wife here with you. Would you please introduce her?
Thank you. Lovely wife, Marilyn.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you, and we look forward to working with you as we go forward with ATEP. All right, a couple of quick housekeeping items before we get started. There is an additional item, 4.2, that has been added. It, on the agenda, is at the back, but we will put it where it belongs, right after 4.1. In addition, administration has asked me, I think in response to what, some issues that some of our speakers have raised, to poll and perhaps we will rework item 6.8, and also to accommodate the students and some special guests, we will advance items 6.1 and 6.2. So with those housekeeping details out of the way, let me move now to the invocation, which is to be led by Trustee Jay, to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Trustee Lang.
Bear with me. This is an invocation about invocations. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for an industrious student body eager to learn. Thank you for an excellent faculty eager to teach. Thank you for a wonderful group of employees that make three well-functioning campuses that have great futures and have had great results in the past. One of the items being discussed tonight are the issue, or issues, and they're controversial issues, about the history, role, and nature of invocations themselves. The district is very interested in the legalities and related matters on invocations while conducting district events, meetings, and district business generally. These issues are being pursued and discussed openly and hopefully be resolved forthwith. Please help us in making resolution in a wise, open, and thoroughly examined fashion. Amen. Please join me as we salute the flag to our nation.
Pledge of Allegiance, to see the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Typically, we move at this point to introduce to resolutions, but we have a special guest with us today and an introduction to make. The guest is the Orange County Treasurer, the Honorable Chris Street, and I will ask the Chancellor to make a fuller introduction, since this is an issue that relates to him. Welcome, Treasurer Street.
It is our great honor to have a prominent Orange County elected official with us here this evening, Mr. Chris Street. Welcome, and we welcome your comments at this point.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and honorable members of the Board of Trustees at South Orange County Community College District. As many of you know, the Orange County Treasurer, Tax Collector, invest funds for both county and the schools here in Orange County. Generally, we invest approximately $6 billion of the people's money, and today I have the distinct pleasure to announce that Dr. Raghu Mather will be the newest addition to what we call the Treasurer's Oversight Committee. The Treasurer's Oversight Committee is the empowered organization which, in fact, oversees the activities and the investment structures of the Treasurer's Office in the County of Orange. There are five members of this Oversight Committee, and now two, including Dr. Habermill and Dr. Mather, will now represent schools here in Orange County. It's been a wonderful partnership, working with schools. It's a distinct pleasure to come and see how the people's business is done tonight, the young people, and the incredible growth in the three campuses, and it always amazes me that the team and the, that you've all worked together, and you've been the honor of all with your ability to make your progress and keep your debt down. So I really respect that, and it's a pleasure to be able to announce this for Dr. Mather and for schools here in Orange County.
Well, Mr. Street, thank you so much for taking the time out of your busy schedule to come tonight to make this announcement, and it's an awesome responsibility, and I look forward to working with you on behalf of the educational community in particular and Orange County in general. Thank you very much.
We'll be great partners. Thank you.
Yes, we will be, and I already got my briefing on this thing just last week, so I'm looking forward to it. Thank you, Chris.
I'll also comment on behalf of the Board. I know that it has been somewhat unsettling in financial markets the last couple of months. We have had a number of questions of your office, and I just want to say on behalf of the Board, thank you to the responsiveness that we've seen, number one, the responsiveness, and number two, that the reports you've given to us have been pretty good news, that the office that you're running is making a concerted effort to keep those funds and all of the funds that are under your trust as safe and secure as they are. So we appreciate your efforts on behalf of us in managing the money and on behalf of the Board in responding to our questions. So thank you very much.
Well, just, just, just one comment. I always have given the opportunity, of course, I'd like to update the Board. For Orange County, we made $317 million in 2007, and in fact, have done well this year, including this last month. With all the turmoil and stress going on, we made $13.6 million. So I think we're, we're working together in that partnership.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
At this point, we'll move to public comments. I have Professor Cosgrove up first, to be followed by Professor Hagerty. And while he makes his way to the podium, I have a slip from Mary, but is that from earlier? Just the earlier, thank you. All right, Professor Cosgrove?
Thank you. I have the additional two minutes of Dr. Hagerty's. I want to commend the Board and the fine hand of Trustee Fuentes for this afternoon's dedication program. I thought it was articulate, simple, and eloquent. A very nice job. My comments, as President of the Academic Senate at Saddleback College, relate to the item that was pulled in preparation for discussion at the next board meeting, I assume, on reassigned time and stipends. Accreditation self-study is coming up, and it's a comprehensive review of a district structure, a college structure within the district. And the last accepted without reservation self-study that we have was in 1992, 16 years ago, and it'll be 18 years when we finish our 2010 self-study. I know what is required to write a well-researched and focused self-study, as do other faculties, some administrators, and classified staff, and now two board members who have served on a recent focus study. When our former administration took on the most recent focused accreditation report, it became clear in June the response would not meet the demands of the accrediting agency. Our SLOs and AUOs would not have been done as required by the WASC demands. While we do not know the outcome from this most recent response that we have submitted in October, I believe because of the guided quality and teamwork that we have, a very good chance of getting off the WASC watch list. The offers of the Senate requested six LHEs for the upcoming self-study, for the accreditation chair, and six each for the four chairs of these different standards. The recommendations you may have come before you will be for perhaps three LHEs each. Half of what we believe is necessary in the first stage of planning. This is not sufficient. We provided our administration with three semester and two summer overviews of what positions and costs would be required. Accreditation like SLOs and AUOs, program review, and institutional effectiveness is a federal mandate. We are required to meet these mandates. The Senate knows what must be done, since we have begun a kind of small business in writing midterm reports, focused accreditation reports with site visits, and focused accreditation reports without site visits. We have done five such reports since our last six-year self-study, but noticeable changes, I think, have occurred. We have reduced the tension within the district, and we have seen a lessening of micromanaging, and we have seen great progress in our SLOs. One of the reasons we have had yearly visits since 2002 is because we have not allocated adequate support for these faculty and staff working on these reports, and we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars since the last self-study report on paying for site visiting teams, expenses, hotels, travel, meals, computer rentals, on paying faculty and staff to research and write reports, and then to revise and rewrite them again, and to this, the time that faculty, add to this, the time that faculty, administrators, and managers put into these reports, a reactive approach, when they could have been working on programs, curriculum, problem solving, and so on, a proactive approach. I am describing hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money needlessly spent. So let's do it right this time. Please provide us with the resources, and note that we are already 10 months behind our timeline, a timeline given earlier to our college administration and passed on up the line last February. In business, when a job comes in on short notice, it costs more, because the time tightness restricts scheduling options, thus increasing cost. Accreditation is for students, so that they are assured that this college has the academic integrity and rigor that will permit them to transfer, to obtain career training, and to allow them to secure better positions as they move up their career ladders. And to ensure that we receive a self-study report validated by the Accrediting Commission, we must have the Senate guiding this demanding technical work, along with all the ongoing work it does for the college and district. The Senate is charged, under Ed Code and Title V, to be the responsible party for accreditation. The Board helped two years ago by increasing the LHEs Senate officers received by six per term to a total of 21 LHEs. Other Orange County Community College Senators have 48 LHEs for their Senates, Santa Ana College and Fullerton College, and Orange Coast has provided 36. Those are our competitors. We are at a disadvantage, I'm just about finished, thank you, in developing curriculum programs, degrees, and certificates without additional assistance. Senate Presidents at both colleges do 100% administrative work, daily problem solving, sitting on dozens of committees at the college and district level. We oversee program review, SLOs, and institutional effectiveness, all of which directly feed into the accreditation report. We are requesting for the Academic Senate nine additional LHEs per semester to get the work done. Currently at 21 LHEs, we have exactly what we had in 1995. We urge you to help the college, our students and staff, and yourselves in creating a stellar college, because we commit ourselves to excellence. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Cosgrove, and we rec, we recognize it wasn't you, but Professor Hagerty who went long.[984.23][984.23](LAUGHTER). Up next is Professor Westfall, to be followed by Ashley Mockett.
My name is Carla Westfall, and I teach math here at Saddleback College. I'm here tonight to address item 6.3 on the agenda, the approval of retainer agreement to engage legal counsel regarding matters of invocations at school and district events. I'd like to briefly fill the listening public in on the history of this issue. For years, you, the Board, have insisted on including a formal invocation, prayer, at school events, most notably the annual scholarship ceremony and commencement. You have been repeatedly asked to stop this practice out of respect for the diverse religious beliefs held by members of our community and for the legal principle of separation of church and state. In 2006, the Academic Senate representing the faculty, and the ASG representing the students, and the statewide Academic Senate representing all faculty at all California community colleges, all passed resolutions requesting that you stop praying at school and district events. Your response was largely to ignore these requests, and you even increased the number of events at which you include prayers, adding a prayer to a faculty in-service event. Last May, you received a letter from the legal staff at Americans United for Separation of Church and State, challenging the inclusion of prayer at three specific events, the scholarship ceremony, commencement, and in-service. For a long time, you simply ignored this letter. I am pleased to see that you have finally recognized that it is irresponsible to ignore potential lawsuits and are prepared to hire lawyers to answer this challenge. However, given that the prayers in question are not wanted by the faculty or the students, and given the difficult financial times we are in, I would point out that it is also irresponsible to spend taxpayer funds to further what seems to be a personal agenda. I ask that you stop including prayers at school and district events. If you insist on fighting this legal battle, I ask that you use your personal funds, not those of taxpayers like myself.
Ashley Mockett, Ashley Mockett, to be followed by Connie McLean.
Hi. My name is Ashley Mockett. I'm a student here at Saddleback College. I participate in the honors program as well as the ICC. Firstly, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I would like to also address the motion to engage legal counsel to address the matter of invocation. My attendance at last year's scholarship ceremony, and witness to the invocation, deeply moved me, meaning it offended me greatly. I felt it divided people in the room that were, that were gathered there for a common purpose, to celebrate and honor stellar students and their achievement. When President Don Wagner mentioned people that believe versus people that do not, he automatically alienated some people in the room, separating them from the rest. Not only this, but some of the donors have withdrew their funds in protest to these invocations, further separating not only those who do not believe, as President Wagner put it, but also those who do not believe that a public college event is not the place to call into question people's spiritual and religious beliefs. I'm here to support the past recommendation to replace the prayer with a moment of silence to unify us all in the reason that we are gathered together, whether it be scholarship or commencement, and encourage the Board to not spend taxpayer money in pursuing this issue. Thank you.
Connie McLean.
Members of the Board, Chancellor, District, and college employees and staff, community and students. I'm here representing Classified Senate this evening, inviting you to participate in a two-part holiday project. I'd like to hand these out. You'll take one and pass them down. It got to me a little late. We're encouraging participation in this two-part project. It's the Second Annual Lift of Marines Barrett Service Project, joining Camp Pendleton, our neighbor to the south, with Classified Senate. The first project, we are soliciting donations to provide gift packages to as many Marines as possible in the First Marine Regiment. These are single Marines without local family that will be returning from Iraq on January 2nd, and the packages will be delivered to them at that time as a welcome home and an appreciation for their service. We're soliciting phone cards, CDs, movie tickets, X-Bucks, 360 games, or cash donations, and we'll do the shopping for you. The second part is a taste of home. For that, we have paper plates that we would ask you to decorate and/or write a note or a sentiment on, put the cookies in the plastic bag, and return them to us. We're collecting both of these items to be delivered December the 17th, so if we could collect them prior to that, hopefully by December the 15th, so that we'll have time to assemble them, make any purchases from donations. I have several of the plates and the bags available for tonight, if anyone is willing to commit to that, and I also am happy to take donations tonight. However, we have provided the information on that flyer of how you can reach us after the fact, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
That concludes the public request to speak. We'll turn now to reports from the Board, and as always, we will start with the recently re-elected and congratulations to him, Trustee Jay.
Thank you, Don. I'd like to congratulate all the incumbents on the Board who ran for positions again, and of course, four were elected. Congratulations, Dave, and congratulations, John, and congratulations, Tom, and, and of course, I won too. But anyway, I, I'd like to say that, believe me, it was an enlightening moment, I think, for all of us. We've had lots of elections, many times, none of the incumbents have been challenged, and this time, all were, and all of, all of you came out very well, so congratulations. Secondly, Tom, I'd like to congratulate you on the dedication ceremony that you ran this afternoon, on the dedication of the Ronald Reagan Board of Trustees Room here, and you did it very well, and you had a auspicious list of guests, and we all appreciated it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Padver.
Yes, just briefly, I also want to comment about our dedication ceremony today. This was remarkable, considering that Ronald Reagan started the first college in this district, Saddleback College, so I'm very pleased and hope you all appreciate that as well, and I'll keep my remarks brief in light of the hour.
Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and to my colleagues who have won reelection. Congratulations, one and all. Look forward to working with all of the Board members here present this evening and the years ahead. I'd like to report from our Orange County Legislative Task Force November Meeting summary. The Legislative Task Force is a body that represents all four community college districts in Orange County. It includes the Chancellors, members of the Boards of Trustees, and administrative representatives from the several districts. They meet on a monthly basis, and this year in particular, our good Chancellor is chairing and hosting the meetings for the year. The state budget crises dominated the discussions at the November meeting. The body listened to a report that indicates that combined Orange County community colleges are facing cuts in excess of $41 million this year. Many ideas and strategies were discussed revolving around how we can inform our communities about the impacts of these cuts. All of our respective Public Affairs Directors who participate in the committee are meeting regularly to develop strategies and to share with administrators and Board members. In these tough times, we're united in our commitment as a working committee to acknowledge that community colleges are our state's best economic stimulus. I want also to take a moment to thank Chancellor Mather for his leadership in another project, and that is in pursuing our district's hosting of an ethics training event this week. It's gardening, garnering participation from trustees and executives from all four Orange County districts, and I think that it's a tribute to our district that we should have the, have taken the initiative to instill in community college leaders throughout our county the focus on ethics training. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice President Williams.
Yes, good evening. I too would like to congratulate my fellow trustees, Trustee Lang, Trustee Fuentes, Trustee Jay, on your reelection to the Board, and I look forward to serving with you another term. And I'd like to thank my constituents, the elected, the elect, or the citizens of South Orange County Community College District for re-electing me to another term. It's, will be my fifth term, so, and I'll keep my reports short also. I just wanted to report that I attended a dinner, the Trauma Intervention Program Dinner recently, where public safety officials were honored, police officers, nurses, firefighters, and my wife and I had the pleasure of sitting with Irvine Valley College Police Chief Will Glenn at that dinner. It was a wonderful program. The Orange County Sheriff, Sheriff Hutchins spoke, and that's it. It's been a busy month. I've been out of town, visiting family in Seattle last weekend, and I did see the fearsome UCLA Bruins play the 0-9 Washington Huskies, so that's how my weekend went. And Trustee Wagner's a UCLA alum, I had to say that. Thank you.
It's been a long football season, but we're a basketball school. All right. Let me publicly add hearty congratulations to all of my colleagues who have been re-elected, and I look forward to another couple of good years with you folks, and congratulations to all of you. In addition, obviously, congratulations to the Chancellor for his appointment to the Oversight Committee that was announced just tonight. That's a great feather in the cap of the district, and we really appreciate your efforts on, on behalf of the district and, and the taxpayers of Orange County in serving on that, on that committee. In addition, I also want to extend my thanks to President Rockmore of Irvine Valley College. Earlier this, this month, he and I had an opportunity to get flu shots, but they weren't just any flu shots, they were in and around the Police Department of Irvine and the Police Department at Irvine Valley College that were doing an exercise in the event of a biological disaster, a terror attack, or, or something along those lines. It was a training opportunity, but in, in that opportunity also were the chance to get flu shots. I understand we ran something like 1,500 residents there about through there, and he and I were one of the first, along with Chief Maggard, the first to get the shots, and because they kept stiff upper lips, they encouraged me, and I did too, and we all came through it. And if you haven't had a flu shot, I heartily recommend it. All right, thank you all, and let me turn to Trustee Milchker.
I, without repeating what my other Board member said, I also heartily congratulate all of my re-elected Board members and look forward to working with them in the next few years. I thought I would mention a few events I attended. One was the Saddleback College 40th Anniversary Gala event, which actually raised over 70,000... One was the Saddleback College 40th Anniversary Gala event, which actually raised over $70,000 net for Saddleback College students and programs and projects for the faculty members and for the school to be able to use this monies to be able to help the students. And it was a very enjoyable event. Not only was it the 40th anniversary, but it was set on a boat, so you got your boarding pass, you went on a boat, you danced the night away. I danced with Dr. Ben all night long, and they had some very, very excellent creative things that you could purchase through silent auctions, and I did get a number of those. So I just want to congratulate Michelle Anstadt and Todd Burnett and all the people that worked so hard at putting that event together. I also attended the Saddleback College at the Art Gallery. This past Saturday, they had a special reception, meet the artist, for artist and Saddleback Emeritus College Professor of Art Pam Turner, and she was showing her sabbatical project, which was to take pictures and to do drawings all around the Mediterranean coast, and this was in Spain and Greece and all the countries around the Mediterranean coast. And I have an opportunity to talk to some of her students at the Emeritus Institute, and they recommended this art exhibit heartily. And if any of you have time, these are fantastic watercolors and beautiful pictures of lovely places. And the Saddleback College Art Gallery is located right next to the theater, and it's open Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday from 10 to 2, and then it's open Thursday evenings. So you can check the website of, actually, just gallery.saddleback.edu, and you'll find the hours, and see what some of our wonderful professors do, and see the inspiration that they give to their students.
Thanks, Trustee Milchick. Trustee Lang.
Yes, I'll also add my congratulations to my fellow re-elected trustees, and also add that I look forward to working with all of the trustees and the Chancellors over the coming years. Also, congratulations to the Chancellor on his appointment to the Treasurer's Oversight Committee, and to Trustee Tom Fuentes for his leadership with respect to the dedication ceremony and proposal for the Ronald Reagan Board of Trustees' Room. I also just want to extend my sympathy and thoughts to those who have lost property in the recent Southern California wildfires, and at the same time, congratulate our firemen and other emergency responders for their heroic efforts with respect to everything that they've done in combating that effort. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Lee.
I got a chance to volunteer at the flu shot drive this month, and it was really great. Thank you, President Rockmore, for leading that out. I thought it was really, really good. Also, I attended IVC's Veterans Day Ceremony, which was also really great. And lastly, I attended a show that we have going on at IVC. It's called Radio Hour. It's also happening next week, too, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I believe. It's a lot of fun, so I suggest that you guys go and check it out if you guys have the time.
Thank you. Chancellor.
Thank you, President Wagner. On behalf of the faculty, staff, students, I would like to take the opportunity to congratulate all the trustees who were re-elected, and I think this is a good sign from the public that the district is well-run, and this helps provide stability and continuity in our operations. I'd like to thank Trustee Fuentes for your guidance and leadership in naming this Board of Trustees' Room after a very famous, very well-deserved President Ronald Reagan, and it has been an honor to work on this project. Congratulations to both Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College for holding the veterans' programs. I know that both the programs were scheduled about the same time, so I was only able to attend one, but I know that both the programs were well-organized and well-attended, and I congratulate Presidents Rockmore and President Todd Burnett for your leadership in scheduling such programs each year. This year for the first year for Todd Burnett, but I know that such programs will continue in the future. I've been visiting and interacting with the faculty and staff of various divisions and schools on both the campuses, Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College, as well as the Aetop Campus. This is something I enjoy doing each year. I like to learn directly from the faculty and staffers on their minds and how we can continue to serve our students better. Finally, I would like to mention that on behalf of the Orange County Legislative Task Force, that we will be making a presentation. We'll be doing a workshop session at the Community College League of California Conference on Saturday, which is being held here in Orange County in Anaheim on November 22nd. We'll be doing a presentation along with the Orange County Community College District's PIOs, and from this district, Tracy Daly will be participating in that conference with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any Board requests for reports? Seeing none, we will move to the advanced items. We pulled two of them up front, 6.1 and 6.2, and I think we should take them in reverse order, since I think we can get through 6.2 quickly and send those folks on their way. That is the district's annual audit report, and we have our audit team here. There we go. Trustees Milchick, Williams, and I have had an opportunity to meet with the, as the Audit Committee, to meet with the auditors, did so last week, and are pleased to report that we had a very positive and very clean audit. So with that introduction, I'll turn it over to Gemma Atkins.
Tishen.
I'm not going to get the last name right.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. We've only been working together for five years.
Thank you, Trustee Wagner, and thank you. I really appreciate being pushed forward. I'm actually very happy to be here today, given the situation in Southern California yesterday. I was really worried about whether the 57 would be open, whether the toll road would be open, whether I would have to go way out to the 605 and then all the way in, so it all worked out really well. So very pleased to be here this evening, and I am here to report back to you on the audit of the June 30, 2008 financial statements for the district, and I want to talk just very briefly about kind of the process. As Trustee Wagner mentioned, the Audit Committee does meet with the audit team, and we start out the audit process by meeting initially to set expectations and responsibilities and discuss some of the significant events that are occurring within the district so that we can develop an informed audit plan. During the course of the audit, we are not just at the district office, we also visit your two campuses, well, two of your campuses. We visit IVC and Saddleback, and we are required by the state to look at how you collect and report your FTES data and how that's transmitted up to the state. We're also required to test your financial aid programs, so we do visit both sites so that we can accomplish those two tasks. In addition, we spend quite a bit of time, we spend about 1,000 hours in total, on the district audit, and much of that time here at the district office with your administrative staff. Once the audit is complete, we do, again, meet with the Audit Committee to go over the results of the report. We are required by our standards to go through that in great detail. So we've gone through the report with them in great detail, and so I'm going to kind of go through it very briefly with you this evening. The first item that I do want to point out is the opinion, and that's really our responsibility is to audit the financial information and come back to you with an opinion as to whether the financial statements are fairly stated. So the beginning of the report, just immediately following the table of contents, you'll find our independent auditor's letter, and we've issued an unqualified opinion on the financial statements. That's the best opinion that we can render, and what we're saying is that the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, and so that's always a very positive and good accomplishment, and speaks quite a bit to your accounting staff here. I also want to point out that this year there was a significant change in terms of accounting principles that had to be applied. There was a new standard that your district had to implement, having to do with the reporting on post-employment healthcare benefits and the liability associated with that. So the audit report does talk about that. There's a new footnote disclosure in there about that, and we did spend quite a bit of time meeting with the district's staff and consultants to ensure that the reporting was accurate. You did fund those liabilities into an irrevocable trust, which I'm sure you're all aware of, and so we did spend some time auditing those transactions, and the report currently has two additional schedules which have to do with the balance sheet and the income statement for that trust, and so you'll find that in the financial statements as well. Something else to point out, we audit the foundations as well, and so the financial statements, both the balance sheet, income statement, and the cash flows also include the component unit, which are your foundations, and so our audit has included, and our opinion includes those entities as well. In addition to the financial information in the opinion, the state requires that we look at specific programs and provide specific information, so we've spent quite a bit of time looking at things, as I mentioned, such as your FTES and programs such as the Calworks Program. We're also required to look at your federal programs, as I mentioned, financial aid, but we also do a rotation of other federal programs, and so this year we included in our rotation the National Science Foundation Rapid Technology Program, so we did look at that. In addition to giving a report on the opinion on the financial statements, we also issue reports on our findings in terms of the programs and the state requirements. So there are three letters at the back of the report addressing whether there are any internal control issues or whether there are any compliance issues. We did have one finding this year related to the Rapid Technology Program, having to do with the charges for indirect costs, and so that is reported at the back of the financial statements. Another item we do look at every year, we're required to look at, is if there are any prior year findings, we need to report back on that. There were no prior year findings last year, so nothing to report in that respect. Okay, that is a very brief recap of the audit process, the financial statements, and the results of the audit. I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Question for many of my colleagues. No? Trustee Milchick?
It isn't a question, but I was delighted to attend the Audit Committee meeting and learn that everything is copacetic with our district with a few really minor, one very, very minor detail, and that it looks like everyone's ethical, you know, so far, and the books are clean and well-done, and we're following all the rules and regulations by the state and the federal regulations, and as a trustee, it felt really good to hear that from, you know, an independent audit committee, so thank you.
Further questions or comments? Trustee Williams. Sorry, Trustee Padberg first.
I'd just like to make a motion that we accept the audit report as presented.
Saka. Trustee Williams.
Well, I just wanted to thank my fellow trustees, Milchick and Wagner, for serving on the Audit Committee. It's been another interesting year, and Gemma, thank you to your firm.
You're welcome.
I've enjoyed working with you once again, and look forward to doing it one more year.
Great. Well, and we appreciate it, and we definitely appreciate meeting with the Audit Committee. It's definitely an important part of the standards that we need to meet, to sit down and go through in great detail the financial information. It's really management and those charged with governance, it's your responsibility to, you know, for these financial statements, really, our responsibility is strictly that opinion, so we definitely appreciate how seriously you take that role and that responsibility, that fiduciary responsibility. And also, if I can, I would just like to thank Gary and Beth Mueller and their departments. They do a tremendous job of providing us with all the information that we need. There are a lot of quick turnarounds and timetables, and they help us coordinate with the site folks and help us turn everything around so that we can get this report to you in time, so we truly appreciate all of their hard work, and we enjoy working with them as well.
In closing, I just thought I'd say, in my year serving on the Audit Committee, not every year is like this. This is really nice to see, a clean audit. In years past, we've had issues with foundations and how they handle the monies and how they're designated. We've had issues of how the two colleges would say handle cash payments for tuition and that, but over the years, we've really learned from the auditors in reporting what the best practices should be, and I think we've implemented all of those things. So this is really nice to see a clean bill of health as far as the finances of the district and the colleges, so. And thank you once again for allowing me to serve on the Audit Committee to my fellow Board members.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, thank you for your last comment there, because it was one that I wanted to echo, and that is, I think we feel that we've got extremely capable administrative staff, particularly in the financial area, led by Vice Chancellor Gary Portner, and also by the rest of your team, and I think that's been validated by the audit that you've carried out and the information that's been contained here, so again, kudos to you, Gary, and the rest of your team.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
It's for review and study, so.
Oh, no, it said action item to accept.
It says review and study.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. I'm told we need to vote, despite that it's not here for action. Let's vote.
After accepting the audit, I hope.
The matter carries unanimously. At this point, we will move to item 6.1, which is the Saddleback College Associated Student Government Budget.[1583.38][1583.38](APPLAUSE) Okay. Chancellor Mather?
Yes, thank you. Yes, Saddleback College is scheduled to present the student body, or student government budget. Let me call upon President Todd Burnett to introduce the presenters.
Thank you, Chancellor. Mr. President, members of the Board, I'm very pleased to be able to introduce some of our favorite people in our district, our students. And with that, we are going to have a presentation made on the ASG student government by our, this year's ASG President, Kalen Kelly, and along with our Treasurer, Travis Fuller. I'd also like to note that Audra Deepadova, who is the Director of Student Development and the ASG Advisor, is also here as well. With that said, Kalen.
Good evening, Board members, Chancellor Mather, Presidents Burnett and Rockmore, distinguished guests, and fellow students. My name is Kalen Kelly. I am the 2008-2009 Associated Student Government President of Saddleback College. I am so pleased to be here this evening to present our budget to you. I came to Saddleback College from Mission View High School. I plan on transferring to UCLA to become a Bruin to major in Communication Studies, and as for football, there's always next year. Besides my involvement in ASG, I am active in three campus clubs, two of which I am an officer. I carry a full course load, and I work part-time. I came to Saddleback College expecting to make the most of my experience by getting involved. What I didn't realize is the impact that this involvement would have on my life and the development of my goals. I feel very well-grounded in the fact that I will be a leader, prepared to serve my fellow citizens no matter what career path I choose. My Saddleback College experience solidified this foundation and gives me the confidence to pursue my life's goals. As members of ASG, we devote our time to serving our fellow students. I therefore benefit from this program in a variety of ways, as both a student and as a student leader. As a Chair of the Summer Budget Committee, I know well the time and energy that went into the formulation of this budget that we are here to present to you this evening. While it was a formative and immensely valuable experience for all involved, I know that the single greatest motivation for all of us has always been serving our peers by supporting student success. I'd therefore like to hand things over to Travis Fuller, our 2008-2009 dedicated ASG Treasurer, who will formally present the ASG budget. Thank you for your time and your consideration.[1734.33][1734.33](APPLAUSE)
Okay. Well, before I begin anything tonight, I first want to thank my contingent of supporters here. Yes, thank you. It is truly you guys who make ASG tick, and without your participation and effort, we wouldn't be anywhere, and again, so I sincerely thank you for being here tonight. That being said, my name is Travis Fuller. I am the ASG Treasurer of Saddleback College. I'm also very immersed in the camp- I'm also very immersed in the campus life here at Saddleback. I am the President of the Honored Student Council. I am the Vice President of Fellowship for Phi Theta Kappa and Academic Honor Society, and I'm also an active member of MUN. And first, I really want to emphasize that we do administer a very substantial budget. And at times, this can be an incredibly difficult and daunting process, yet for all of its difficulties, it is still immensely rewarding. I know that as I pursue my career and my goals, that I will be able to draw upon this experience and really use it in my quest for success. And the overarching goal of ASG is student, or the overarching goal of student government is student development. And I think that the formulation of this budget certainly fulfills that quota. So now I'm going to go into exactly how this budgetary process works. Each spring, we solicit formal requests from each division on the campus. And upon receiving these requests, we then deliberate upon each decision with respect to several crucial factors. And these factors include the number of students that will benefit from each event. How many students participate in a particular event is obviously an imperative factor in this budgetary process. We want to find events that will benefit as many students as possible. Also, events that were supplementary to our students' academic interests were also favorably looked upon. We feel that it is our responsibility to really encourage our students' intellectual ambitions, and I think that this budget reflects that. And finally, events that contributed to the vitality of our campus life here on Saddleback College were also favorably looked upon. We feel that it is our responsibility to create a healthy campus environment that our students can really be an active member of. And as you can see, we received a total requested amount of $1,088,237, and we funded $965,000 of those original requests. So while this budgetary process is obviously competitive, and we do need to make budgetary cuts in order to work within the monetary constraints that are imposed upon us, we were still able to fund 90% of our funding requests, and I think that's something we can take a tremendous amount of pride in. This is our projected revenue. And regarding our revenue, we base our projections on the previous year's actual income. And in general, we attempted to stay conservative with regards to our anticipated income. In no way do we want to spend money that we do not have, and thus, our projections do not deviate too radically from past precedent. And hopefully, that will be beneficial to student government in the long run. And I'm just going to go over a few notable differences here. As you can see, there is a disparity in our ASB card projection and the actual amount received from the previous year. And this is due to the fact that our ID card machine was moved to admission and records. And while this is beneficial to our students, we are anticipating a decrease in revenue simply because of the transitionary period. And in our bookstore, as you can see, there is a congruence between the two figures. However, in reality, we really could have raised that projection because of the spike in enrollment for Saddleback College. However, we consider the fact that student government is doing all it can to reduce the cost of textbooks for our students. We feel that the high price of textbooks is a burden that our students don't really need to bear, and we're doing all that we can in order to alleviate that burden. And recently, Saddleback ASG partnered with the Saddleback Foundation and raised $10,000 to implement an emergency book loan program. And we're still hashing out the details on that, but I think it's very promising. And as you can see, our total comes out to $824,000 for our projected income. And these are our expenses, and as you can see, we categorize our expenses into five sections. The first of these sections is student support, and this is a category in which, that contains events which help our students financially. And these include scholarship allocations, which amount to $35,000 this year, which is a distinct increase from the previous year. And this obviously does help our students in their educational aspirations. Our second category is experiential education, and this encourages learning through experience. And these programs usually occur outside of the classroom and really expand the depth of our students' knowledge through firsthand experience. And we also have campus life. And as I mentioned earlier, we feel committed in ASG to creating a vibrant campus life here on Saddleback College. We really want to make it participatory and really have our students feel obliged to want to be a member of the Saddleback community. We also have ASG operations, and these pay for the essential functioning of ASG and our support in student development. And these include basic things such as copier services, credit card fees, duplication, and supplies. And finally, we have our vendor assessments, and a large fraction of our income does come from our cafeteria and bookstore. And thus, we are required to pay a mandatory fee to either of these entities, and we do this in order to provide essential services to our students. And this is a pie chart illustrating our expenses, and what I really want you to take away from this pie chart is that the vast majority of our expenses go directly to the students. Experiential education, campus life, and student support are all of the categories most associated with the general student body here at Saddleback College. And as you can see, that is a large fraction of our expenses. And this is our budget summary. As I mentioned earlier, our projected income is $824,000. And as I mentioned also earlier, this is a conservative estimate. In all likelihood, we will receive a higher amount. And our projected expenses are at $965,000, and this is likely an overestimate. In all likelihood, our programs that we have allocated our funds to will not spend the entirety of their allocation. And our contingency is set at 4%, which amounts to $32,960. And this contingency is absolutely vital to the mission statement of student government. This is distributed by our Student Senate, and some of our senators are here in the audience tonight. And essentially, what the contingency does is provide the means for paying for any unforeseen expenditures during the year. And for example, the emergency book loan program and CNSA travel expenses, MUN travel expenses is incredibly pragmatic to have, and it's incredibly useful. And that brings our net revenues to negative $173,960. And that is because we spend our money taking into account our beginning balance, which is at $207,641. And we are left with an ending balance of $33,681. And our reserve is at $87,886, which is above the district mandate of 7.5% of our total projected revenue. And lastly, I would just like to emphasize the amount of time and effort that went into the formulation of this budget. Every decision was hashed out in great detail and great collaboration, and throughout this entire process, we knew acutely what was at stake, and that is the welfare of the students of Saddleback College. And as leaders, it is our responsibility to treat any matter and every matter with integrity, accountability, and transparency. And this budgetary process was no different. And in terms of the future, actually, at the beginning of the year, our President, Todd Burnett, came to one of our Senate meetings, and he spoke about how we might go about leaving a legacy here at Saddleback College. And we've discussed this a few times in the past months. And for me personally, I don't think that our legacy will be left by how many, or the growth and development of leaders within student government. That is important, but it is secondary. It's not about us, and it never has been. Rather, our legacy will be left by how efficiently we allow our students to succeed here at Saddleback College and pursue their ambitions and achieve what they need to achieve in order to have a successful life. And if we can have even one student find his or her true calling or overcome some obstacle that had previously prevented their success, then I think that we have already left an impressive legacy and one that we can all take a tremendous amount of pride in. And that concludes my budget presentation. If you have any questions, I will be happy to answer them.
We have a number. All right. Thank you. We have a number of questions to start. I'll go to Trustee Lang, followed by the student trustee, and then I have some questions. Trustee Lang.
Thank you. First of all, Mr. Fuller, I wanted to congratulate you and all of the members that collaborated with you on this budget. I know what, how much hard work has gone into this, what a collaborative process it has been, and I think all of you deserve congratulations for being part of that, and I'm sure it was a great learning experience for all of you. My question really revolves around a similar question that I had related to the IVC ASG budget. And that had to do with the fact that, obviously, we are spending down a significant amount of the beginning balance so that current-year expenditures are expected to exceed by a significant amount what your conservative estimates of current-year revenues are. And, you know, frankly, concerned about that more, again, from the standpoint of setting the bar or maybe future expectations. When your successors come along and are looking at what levels to establish expenditures at, that concerns me for one thing. I guess the other thing that concerns me again is, I know there was some comment made before regarding what the, I think, maximum amount of reserve that you're able to maintain is. And I frankly would like to see some of the constitutional language that supports that, you know, just so we have that information as a board. I think that would be interesting to tell. And so perhaps just a few comments about that would be helpful.
So just to clarify, you're basically posing a question concerning why we decided to spend the entirety of our beginning balance? Well, I first want to point out that the reason we have that beginning balance is because last year, similar to us, they overprojected their expenses and they had a conservative income, and we are following that this year. Now, why we spent it, and I can certainly acknowledge, I can certainly acknowledge your point about preparing for the future, and we certainly have a savings in place in order to, or achieve that, I guess. But we spent this because, again, we feel that it is our responsibility to help our students. I mentioned that we were able to fund 90% of our funding requests, and our job is not to, well, it is to expose our students to the rigors of the real world, but it is also in a sense meant to insulate them from the real world as well. We don't want to have them be limited here at Saddleback College. We want them to really have free rein in regard to their ambition, and we don't want to impose any restrictions upon them. So we did spend that beginning balance, and I think you'll see next year, we will also have a very large beginning balance because, like I said, we underproject, we overprojected on our expenses, and our income is very conservative. So I hope that answers your question. I don't know if it does, but hopefully.
Not entirely, but I think that probably you'll hear perhaps a similar theme in some of the other comments.
Okay.
Trustee Lee.
Good job, Travis. I was really impressed by your presentation. I do, however, have one concern with this budget and a little bit of a confusion. If, correct me if I'm wrong, but if I remember correctly, I think IVC operates on a budget that's half what Saddleback operates on. And they're giving, they allocated $60,000 in scholarships, and I know that was a concern with most of the trustees here, how, what are we doing to give back to the students? And if I look here, it looks like you did, you know, $3,000, raised $3,000 for scholarships, but that's half of what IVC gives in scholarships, so I'm a little concerned about that.
Well, thank you for your question, Hannah. It is true that we only allocate $35,000 for scholarships, and that is an increase from last year. However, I don't think that you should look at our funds or that $35,000 strictly in terms of a scholarship. All of our funds reach the students. In essence, our income is a giant scholarship for our student body. Everything reaches the students. Everything benefits their ambitions and their success. And I don't think that, I think you're looking at scholarships in a technical sense, and we also have travel scholarships as well. So I don't think that we are somehow underhanding our students in any way. We are contributing to their success in a vital manner. And all of our funds, like I said, reach our students.
All right. Well, let me, let me jump in here and just beg to differ with you because I look at this and I see about 15% of your student support, which is only 23% of your total budget, goes towards scholarships. I mean, I look at Model UN and forensics alone, and you're spending more there than you are directly giving back to the students. I see something called experiential education. I don't think we've ever seen that in a Saddleback budget before. Certainly, we didn't see it in the IVC budget. I'm not at all convinced, or I don't think you've told us, how experiential education or campus life, which is one of your largest, almost your largest budget item here, gives back to the students. This is a time when students are paying a lot of money to attend classes and to buy their books, and I'm seeing a budget that, well, supports the students because it gives some money to forensics, and it gives some money to the surfing team meals, and it gives some money to the Ride the Wave early bird orientation. That's not where the rubber meets the road for the students. You didn't, I don't think you answered Trustee Lang's questions. I am curious what the actual language of the Constitution you talk about says. And I'm looking at a great big net revenue of minus $173,000, almost $174,000. You're spending down your reserve. Maybe that makes sense in these budget times. I question that. But you're not giving it back to the students who built that reserve. It's their money. And, and I just see a disconnect between where this budget seems to be spending money and the actual students on the ground. We asked the IVC folks to go back and rethink their budget, providing a little bit more context and a little bit more real money in the pockets of students, and I think that would be appropriate with, with this budget. Trustee Padberg.
I want to just compliment you on the budget and your preparation of it. It's always good to give more, if you can, to students. I understand there are lots and lots of activities. One thing that you have done that I think is very important is to focus on textbooks, which are extremely expensive. And I think that you've picked out one of the biggest problems students have. The tuition is minor in cost, but the textbooks are not. So I'm wondering, I know that the College Foundation here at Saddleback has established some funds just to put more books on reserve, and I'm wondering if you've thought about doing that to increase the number of reserved books and somehow limit that to people who really need it, people who can afford the books. I don't know how you can do it. I know we talked about that at the Foundation as being an issue, but I'd like to see that done. I am going to move acceptance of this budget. I think you can always improve it, and that you should continue to strive to do that. But it's a very good budget, and I'm going to move acceptance.
Second. Chancellor Mather?
Well, there are, well, first of all, let me congratulate the student government for putting together this budget. I understand from your perspective, you have done an excellent job in putting this thing together, and I really appreciate it. But our board has been concerned, as for quite some time, and there are some things in this budget that concern me deeply. And one of them is the lack of definitions about student support, experiential education, and campus life, as to exactly what kinds of activities fit in there. And especially for campus life, the expenditures have increased significantly. From '07, '08, actual amount was a little over $151,000, and the projected expenditure for '08, '09 is $259,000. I'm very troubled by a very small amount of money for a scholarship, considering the size of the budget, especially when I look at the scholarship for '08, '09. Projected expenditure is $35,000, which is a very small fraction of a nearly $1 million budget, and $12,000 are projected to be spent just on the scholarship ceremony, which is almost one-third, considering the amount of money allocated for the scholarship. There have been some questions, comments made about the book loan program, more we can do to help students in that area probably the better, and also the reserves. So unless the board is willing to move forward and approve it, my recommendation will be that we ask the Saddleback College's student government to relook at this budget and come back to another board meeting for a presentation.
Do you -- I'm sorry, Trustee Fuentes, go ahead, and then I'll comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation. It appears that a lot of work has gone into it. I'm concerned, though, that you were able to do this by bringing a budget to us that includes what has to be viewed as deficit spending. You're spending more than you're taking in, and I know that you come to a wonderful time at Saddleback because of the legacy of those who came before you. They left a solid reserve there, and you've chosen to spend a goodly portion of that. I think you have to put yourself in the shoes of those who are going to be where you stand next year. California is in a state of crises. The budget in our state and also in our national government are in very troubled times. We know that students may well be impacted by proposals in Sacramento for increased fees. That means that there's going to be a tightening of the belt in day-to-day student life, a sad thing. That could well challenge what students are able to spend on campus, some of which are your sources of projected revenue. So I think that while you've suggested that you would like to protect the students from some of these realities, I think they are responsibilities. I think that you've got a handle on a good intent to serve the students, but I don't think it serves the overall picture if we just take care of today without a thoughtful concern for tomorrow. I think you're almost there, but I think you'd need to take another shot at it related to adequate reserves for the future, and I would support a proposal to kindly ask you to take another stab and come back to us next month, and maybe we could all support it.
Trustee Lang.
Given the comments that have been made, I'd like to -- I know there's a motion on the floor to approve this, but I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next meeting.
Second. Moved and seconded, non-debatable. Let's vote on tabling the item. The motion to table carries with an advisory yes vote, and we will see you back next month. Will that give you enough time? That's December 5.
I hope so.
Thank you. All right, we are at item 4.1, which is a discussion item, accountability reporting for California community colleges. Let me turn this over to the chancellor.
Thank you. The discussion topic for this month is the accountability report that we must present to the Board of Trustees. Generally, as you may have noticed in the past, I call upon Dr. Bob Bremucci, our Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning Services, to make this presentation, but he's not here tonight because, upon my urging, he's attending a workshop on student assessment related to student learning outcomes and the like at Harvard University. And he has taken with him, upon my request, some other folks like Dr. Craig Justice, Vice President of Instruction at Irvine Valley College, Dr. Rajan Verdin, Vice President of Instruction at Saddleback College, Denise N. Seong, who's the District Director of Research and Planning, and her counterpart at Saddleback College, as well as two professors, Professor Morgan Burrows from Saddleback College and Professor Kerry Tucker from Irvine Valley College. I think they'll come back with tremendous amount of knowledge about the student assessment. So in their absence, I've asked the presidents to do the presentation. So with that, I turn to President Rockmore and President Burnett, who is up first.
Oh, Trustee Lang.
Yes, perhaps before we begin the presentation, I wonder, since Dr. Bremucci isn't here and given the hour of the day, whether we ought to consider postponing this discussion item and bringing it back and moving on with the rest of the business of the board.
That is a great point. I asked that question earlier, and we do have a timing issue, which the chancellor can explain.
Let me comment on it.
We're all trying, Dave, but no, we can't.
Right, because this item has already been deferred in the past, and there's a requirement that we must make this presentation to the board because within the next month we are to provide the minutes of this meeting.
In that case, let it be presented.
Good evening, members of the board. We'll try to go real quickly. How's that?
Yes.
First, a real quick background. I think the chancellor mentioned it there briefly, but as you might be aware, the accountability reporting for the community colleges came about two years ago. This is the second year that the report has come out, so we're here on an annual basis, of course, to report to you on these, on the updates and how we're doing at both of our Saddleback College and Irvine Valley campuses. As you probably might be aware, the ARC contains system-wide indicators that were developed on a statewide basis to be able to judge and allow each of our campuses to see how we're doing stacking up with what is called peer groups. And I'll explain those a little bit better when I go forward, but peer groups are basically for each of the various indicators. They went around the country and developed a formula where we're going to be compared to other colleges on the particular indicator. Now, what's interesting about this is that you'll find out that it's not, the peer group isn't one college for all indicators, it's different colleges for every indicator. That was the wisdom of the State System Office and how they went about doing it, and it seems to be working statewide, but we'll see how that works out in a second. And why don't I just jump into it and talk to you about Saddleback? I'm going to go a little bit more detail into each of these so then Glenn can come up and go through pretty quickly on the, how it's working for Irvine Valley. As you can see on Table 1, the first indicator that we are being looked at was the student progress and achievement rate. This is the percent of first-time students who showed the intent to complete and who have achieved any of the following outcomes within six years. That includes transferring to a four-year college, earning an AA or AS degree, an earned certificate, achieved a transfer-directed level, or achieved a transfer prepared, which is basically successfully completing 60 UCCSU units and has a GPA of 2.0 or better. As you can see on Saddleback up on Table 1, over the last three periods of being judged, which was a six-year period for each of those, we've been very stable. In fact, it's amazing that, 59.4, 59.9, 59.8. It shows you that we were first doing a great job, but very consistent over the last three periods. The second table is the second indicator, which is the percent of students who earned at least 30 units at Saddleback College. And of course, this is the percentage of first-time students, and as you can see, once again, extremely stable with a little bit of an increase, 75.8%, 76%, and then 76.9%. Once again, very stable. The third indicator is the percentage of first-time students that have a minimum of six units earned in a fall term and who returned and enrolled in the subsequent fall term, anywhere in the system, that is. Once again, extremely stable, 72, 73, 72%. Table number 4 shows the annual successful course completion rate for vocational courses. And as you can see, once again, very stable, 78, 78, and 77.9, which is basically 78. Table 5, the next indicator, is the annual successful course completion rate for basic skills courses. And success, once again, is defined as receiving an A, B, C, or CR grade in the course. And with that, as you can see, we certainly could use a little bit of, we've had improvement, of course, from the last three periods, going from 62.9 up to 64%. Table 6 has two components to it, the basic skills and ESL improvement rates. On the ESL improvement rates, as you can see, pretty stable, 32, 34, 31. The basic skills improvement rate has been a slight improvement of 55 to 56.8%. Finally, on Table 7 is the enhanced non-credit progress and achievement rate. This is the percent of first-time students who, in their first year, complete a minimum of eight attendance hours in any single enhanced non-credit course. You'll note in a little bit that Irvine Valley has no enhanced non-credit. What that really basically means is non-credit ESL courses. As you know, that's the one indicator that goes way down, down to 9.8%, but what we understand is this is a statewide problem as well, an ESL non-credit, but does deal with a very, very small percentage of our students at Saddleback. Probably the most interesting part of the whole ARC report is the peer grouping, which I mentioned and alluded to earlier. This right here compares where we are at each of these indicators, our rate, what the average of the peer group is, what the low and the high is. So if you look at the first one on student progress and achievement rate, as you can see, Saddleback is above average, 59.6 compared to 57% peer average group. Same kind of thing going on with the second one, which is the percentage of students who earned at least 30 units. Once again, we're above average, that's basically 77 over 74. The persistence rate, which is, you can agree with me, is a very, very important indicator. We are above average, once again, at 72, with the peer average at 70. The annual successful course completion rate for credit, the vocational courses, once again, we're above average at 78 compared to the average of 75. Now, the next two, and if you notice in a different color in the beige, those are two that we are below average. First, we're only slightly below average on the basic skills courses at 64, but if you recall, we made a strong improvement. In fact, look at the next category, which is improvement rate for credit basic skills courses, is in a bright green. The reason it's a bright green is because that's the one where actually we are the highest in the entire peer grouping. So that's a, and a very important one, of course, is the improvement rate for the credit basic skills courses, which once again goes back to the ones that we were below average. So we're basically making strong improvement in the area we need to do the most work. And then finally, once again, for ESL courses, which maybe isn't surprising compared to what we saw earlier regarding enhanced non-credit, and that is, even though this is for credit, is at 31.8, but once again, this is an area that we're making strong improvement in. So with that, we'll hand it over to Glenn, who will talk about Irvine Valley's findings.
Since Todd has provided the definitions for you, I'll go ahead and skip that part. First of all, let's see here. Okay, first up, Table 1 for us, and student progress and achievement rate. Like Saddleback, you're going to see just minor fluctuations as you go across through the years here, ranging from 66.9 on up to the present with 65.6. In Table 2, the percent of students earning at least 30 units, either at the college or system-wide, again, you see that fairly flat margin of error that spans across those numbers. The persistent rate, I'll be talking about a little bit later, we're showing a very slight increase there. That'll be relevant in a few more slides here. The annual successful course completion rate for vocational courses, that's really not one of our strong suits, but you do see a bit of a decline there. We'll talk about that in a moment as well. On Table 5, the annual successful course completion rate for basic skills, you're starting to see a little bit of a rise there in '06, '07. Table 6, our ESL improvement rate. It's important to note that that has an upward trend. We'll look at another table that summarizes that in a moment. Basic skills improvement rate, you see that that is also an area that has gone down a little bit here. And also, as President Burnett has noted, Irvine Valley College does not have enhanced non-credit to report on. The most interesting slide here, as we looked at before, first of all, you see that there are two areas that Irvine Valley College sets the trend within its compare group, and it's important to note that that compare group can be different depending on which indicator we're looking at, so they're not always the same. But student progress and achievement rate, you see that we are the trendsetter in that. Above average on percentage of students who earned at least 30 units, but then you get the persistence rate, which is kind of interesting to look at. We are slightly below average there, and that has to do with the six units and returning one year later. So how those two correlate is kind of interesting. We'll have to look at that. The next annual successful course completion rate for credit vocational courses, we, again, are slightly below average on that one. Above average on annual successful course completion rate for credit basic skill courses, and then setting the trend for the improvement rate for credit basic skill courses, and again, showing some need for improvement in the rate for credit ESL courses. Now, what I can say about this is that the ARC report, as well as institutional effectiveness, both are now tightly integrated into our strategic plan. This data is referred to routinely as we're setting goals and setting strategies for the campus. In fact, you have approved a new dean of career technical education, and we feel that that program is going to be highly effective for increasing our vocational, what we call now, career technical performance here in this indicator. We have also, through the strategic plan, set out a very important, high priority for restructuring the ESL program, including some of the curriculum there, and we expect some very good improvements in the near future as well. Any questions?
Thank you. Chancellor Mather.
I would just like to make one observation. The purpose of presentation of these reports to the Board of Trustees is so that the board is aware as to how our students are doing in these areas. And by doing this presentation, obviously, the presidents recognize the strengths where we are doing well in our colleges and the areas where there's some room for improvement. And I know that they'll be working with their faculty and staff, but all in all, our students are succeeding very, very well.
Further questions or comments from the board? All right, gentlemen, thank you very much. Up now is item 4.2, which is another discussion item that's been added, and it is perhaps the most timely item. It deals with the impact of the state budget for 2008, 2009. Let me begin with the chancellor to present the item.
Thank you, President Wagner. There's a lot to say on this item. I'll try to be brief and keep it moving forward. Let me start with the state of the budget situation in California. Well, the state budget is in a mess, to say the least. Now, when we look at the global economy, the way it is, not doing well in the national economy, the state economy, as well as the local economy, there are some troubling indicators. Just a couple of days ago, we saw an article in the paper, I believe President Wagner referred to it in the Register, that said that the County of Orange is considering some layoffs here locally as well. Now, second point is that our basic aid dollars are under some threat. There's a beginning of conversation in Sacramento about some envy regarding the school districts, community college districts that are on basic aid. There are three community college districts that are on basic aid in California, with some 59 K through 12 districts that are on basic aid. And we have received this concern through our lobbyists in Sacramento. Of course, we depend upon basic aid for one-time expenses, including construction projects or providing matches for the or providing matches for the construction projects, renovation of buildings, technology upgrade or refresh, instructional equipment and maintenance needs. There are concerns on the home assessment front. Because of the housing market situation, a lot of homeowners have asked for reassessment of their property taxes. That will impact the amount of monies available to the school districts, college districts. There's talk of increasing these student fees in community colleges from twenty-six, well, from twenty to twenty-six dollars as early as spring, and certainly thirty dollars starting next year. CSU and the UC systems are also talking about increasing the tuition fees by about ten percent. Folks in this district who have direct knowledge of the budget, who work with budgetary information on a daily basis, including Deputy Chancellor Gary Portner, District Director of Business Services Beth Muller, Presidents Burnett and Rockmore, their budget directors, David at IVC and Carol Hilton at Saddleback College, and yours truly, you know, we work on these budgetary figures all the time, and we are truly concerned. So this is the time to be cautious, to say the least, in managing our budget. We cannot take any of this for granted. Having said that, let me talk about some other information that is out there. On November sixth this year, Governor Schwarzenegger formally called for a special legislative session to address the growing state budget shortfall. He has declared a state of emergency on the budget front. He has indicated that the latest current year shortfall has grown to more than eleven point two billion dollars, and he is proposing a combination of cuts and increased revenues to close the gap. The governor proposes a two-point-five-billion-dollar cut in K through fourteen expenditures for the current year. For the community college portion of the two-point-five million, two-point-five-billion cut in expenditures, the governor proposes a three-hundred-and-thirty-two-point-two-million reduction for community colleges with elimination, with elimination of zero-point-six-eight-percent current-year COLA for a savings of thirty-nine point eight million. I think this COLA of zero-point-six-eight percent that the state had earmarked earlier is evaporating fast. Also, to consider reducing general purpose apportionments by an additional two-hundred-ninety-two-point-four million, which is approximately five percent. Exact amounts, of course, will not be known until the legislature acts on it. Considering the politics of Sacramento, it may take time, considering how long it took Sacramento to adopt a budget for this year. There's some talk of flexibility to transfer categorical funds to the general fund for any purpose up to the amount of their share of the reduction. There's talk of sales tax increase that remains to be seen. The Legislative Analyst Office estimates that the state will need twenty-seven point eight, close to twenty-eight billion dollars in budget solutions over the next twenty months. These are precarious situations. School Services of California, which is a statewide prestigious organization that has been around for many years, and in its community college update of November seventh warns us that those districts that are currently in collective bargaining negotiations, for example, that we can, that they continue to recommend, the School Services of California continues to recommend, that we delay any collective bargaining decision that financially obligates your district until after the specifics of the governor's January budget is known. And, and they indicate that don't count on zero-point-six-eight-percent COLA. Hold off on committing that amount through a salary schedule formula until we see what the actual funded COLA is, if any, after any mid-year cuts are enacted. And at this point, the talk is that there will be no COLA for this year as well as for 2009 and 10. So there are some serious concerns facing the state. In light of this, the governor has created a commission, in fact, to update a state's revenue system. So to help prevent the state's feast of famine budget cycle, the governor recently issued an executive order, in fact, on October thirtieth, creating a bipartisan commission on the twenty-first century economy. Its goal is to reevaluate and modernize California's revenue, revenue laws that have not kept up with the state's economy. So this bipartisan commission will be composed of twelve members, half of whom will be appointed by the governor, and the remaining members will be appointed by the legislative leadership. The commission is tasked with developing a report to the legislature and the governor by April 2009, April fifteenth, 2009, that will provide recommendations to change laws to achieve the following goals. Number one, establish a twenty-first century tax structure that fits with the state's twenty-first century economy. Secondly, to stabilize the state revenues and reduce volatility. Third, promote the long-term economic prosperity of the states and its citizens, and the list goes on. So the point is that there are serious concerns on the, on the economy front, on the financial front, affecting the entire state of California. That will affect us, we don't live and operate in vacuum, we're not insulated here within Orange County, or within Southern California, or within California, or within the nation, and for that matter, in the world. So we do need to pay attention as to what's happening around us. So with that, I conclude my presentation.
Well, that's cheery, thank you.
You're welcome.
Let, let me turn to our chief budget officer and see if he's got anything to add to that presentation.
I would say that that was a complete presentation, there's not much more than I can say, but maybe I will say one thing. It's early on, there's no details that we have about any of this. We have received a simulation from the Community College League of California, and they're demonstrating how much money each district would lose in order to cut the three-hundred-and-thirty-two million dollars that the chancellor mentioned. They had to send it out again because they realized that they had to reduce more money from the other districts because they hadn't taken into account that we're a basic aid district. So now all the other districts are seeing a larger cut from them because of basic aid factors. I bring that up because you can bet there are sixty-nine other districts who are now focused on this very keenly and would like to change that situation. And the chancellor mentioned that also, but there are, there are movements, including this, that are causing a lot of activity. So we need to look out for that. I think that the fee increase very likely is going to have a big, a big change in our enrollments. Yes, it's a recession, but fee increases have always had a big impact on, on us, and presidents can tell you more about that. So I think with enrollments not increasing the same way, we can't count on additional revenues coming in because of increased students. It's, I think everything is in question right now, and nobody has the answers.
And let me turn to our presidents and see if they've got anything they'd like to add.
Well, I think a major key is going to be the raise in tuition, if it does occur, to twenty-six dollars, and then later to, to thirty dollars. As a former vice president for instruction, I know how critical that is and how it can be. I've seen the twenty-six dollars before, and it did cause a strong drop in enrollments. In our demographic, the number of cities that surround us, there is a very large population of folks that are not so poor that they don't have access, well, that they don't have access to financial aid, but they're really on the fence and trying to live in Orange County. And these kinds of increases does have an effect on them. And I predict that we'll see some of that. Now, even though it is hard economic times, and we do see enrollment increases at that time, so I see a number of peaks and troughs that are occurring from a number of different areas, and to me, it really evens out as a zero increase in growth. And with our increasing costs for utilities and operating the, the institution, we're in for some hard times.
I don't want to add too much, but I will say, as we all know, these are tenuous times. I should note that this week, actually, the three of us, the chancellor and, and President Rockmore and myself, will be attending the Community College League of California's annual conference. So we'll be getting a lot more information and a better feel on the pulse of the state, since we'll be with every other chancellor and president, and trustees, I might add, throughout the, the state at the conference. So certainly, we'll be able to bring back a lot more information at that time, too, on the impact. But I can honestly say, coming from the statewide perspective and being in the chancellor's office, and talking to a lot of colleagues around the state, it is not good times out there right now for the rest of the state, and in particular, other community colleges. So I think, just like President Rockmore said, from Saddleback College's perspective, we're doing everything we can to prepare. As you know, we've been doing a really good job over the last couple of years to, to maintain a good fiscal health in times for like this. So it's a good thing that my predecessors and everybody else did that, and obviously a big testament to all of you here in the board and the district. So, thank you.
Can the two of you tell us some of the things you are doing to prepare at this point?
Well, I think, I think a lot of it, obviously, is our single biggest expense in two big categories would be first personnel. And I think in that one, you know, we have salary savings or putting off hirings, filling positions that we have. I think that's one area that's been going on for the last two years. Another one is, would be expenditures. As you know, we have a very large scheduled maintenance backlog at our campus, so we are pushing off projects, you might say, to, to help with that, that area as well. Of course, there's, as we all do in all of our budgets, we do at our homes, we do at our businesses, and we do in this college. There's small things we do every day, and I give a lot of credit to everybody at Saddleback College, as well as the district and Irvine Valley, for doing the small things and have been doing it to respond to, to these difficult times. Certainly, if you would like a more detailed list, we could get that for you at any time.
That's Rock, President Rockmore.
In our case, also, the, we have basically a frost, if you will, on classified hiring. We're watching that extremely carefully. At this point, because we have some growth that will roll into the next year, at this point, we're just monitoring extremely closely and watching every dollar and being as conservative as we can in that budget at this point. If we do get the big hit, then we certainly have a number of things that we can do to, to try to handle that and, and balance that budget, mostly in, probably not hiring at all.
All right. I saw, got Trustee Lang, and then I saw Professor Cosgrove's hand, so let me go to Trustee Lang.
Yes. I'm just curious, Deputy Chancellor Porter, what was the reduction, and you can give it to me on a combined figure, that's fine, that would have occurred between those two schedules that you received from the state chancellor's office? That's my first question. And then I guess my second question would be, what is the shift from state apportionment to basic aid for every, let's say, one percent of COLA that, what does that cost our, what does that relative shift look like, I guess? Is that something you can answer off the top of your head?
To your first question, I would say that if we were to be treated the same way all these other districts are, which I referenced in this chart, we would lose five-point-nine million. And that's the sort of magnitude the rest of the state, all the other districts are, are facing that, and so their eyes are on us, that's, that was the point that I made. For every one percent, I don't know that I, I know I have it, but I don't know that I know it accurately, that I could relate it to you. Maybe the presidents do.
Well, if you don't have it, have it handy, then that would be information I'd be interested to receive.
Yeah, I, I have that in my office, but I don't have that with me.
Yes, sir.
I turn off the lights and I leave the classroom. But on a more positive note, I don't read all the same things you do, and there is some good news for us. It's unfortunate that tomorrow, the California State University Board of Trustees is meeting at Long Beach, and one of the things on their agenda is reducing the number of students coming in. Where are those students going to go? You know, it's community colleges, because the increased rates at CSU and at UC, which is also reducing the number of students it's taking in, the place they're going to go is to the community college. So I think there's a positive side to the unfortunate economic situation.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no other, Trustee Fuentes.
I just want to make one comment. And the information that was shared with us is very serious, and I don't demean any of the seriousness of that, but I tell you how I knew it was serious. When the governor's proposal for some of these cuts came out, it also came out with a list of tax increase proposals. And I know those fellows in Sacramento. Now, this doesn't affect me, because I've had a liver transplant and I can't drink anymore, but they've proposed a five-cent tax on every drink poured in the state of California as a revenue-growing source to help cure this problem. I want to tell you, when the fellows in Sacramento talk about taxing themselves on drinking, we've got a real serious problem in California. So talk about little things, we've already gotten there.
All right, well, on that happy note, we will move to the consent calendar, and I will ask my colleagues, are there any items to pull? Oh, someone want to make a motion?
Nine-thirty.
Second.
All right, moved to second, and that we continue the meeting until nine-thirty. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed abstentions, matter carries unanimously. All right, consent calendar, and Trustee Patberg.
Yes, since we have, actually, many of us been involved in a meeting since three-thirty, I would suggest that we take a break after the consent calendar. I'm pulling five-point-eight and five-point-nine.
Move the ballots.
No, I have one.
Go ahead, Trustee Fuentes.
I'd like to pull five-point-seven.
All right.
And then I'll move the ballots.
And the ballots has been moved in second, and let's vote on the ballots. Now, Trustees Jay and Milchek, please.
Yeah, yes.
Matter carries unanimously. All right. The request for a break was after consent calendar?
Which we just did.
After.
All right. Then let's take a five-minute break, since the consent calendar is now behind us.
I'm sorry.
No, after we finish all of—
Let's do all the items that were on the consent calendar.
You know I serve at your pleasure. Five-point-seven, study abroad program to Peru, and that has been polled by Trustee Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I pulled this item with the hope that I can vote for it, because I certainly think that the study of Machu Picchu is a outstanding opportunity. When matters of study abroad have come before us, one of the consistent concerns that have been expressed by this board, however we feel on other elements of it, I think one consistent concern has been the cost. And this particular one, it gives me cause for concern. As I read it, it's a one-week program, and if I'm, Mr. President, if you can correct me, feel free to, but as I read, it's a one-week program in the neighborhood of twenty-eight-hundred dollars per student, or three-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars per day. I don't think we've ever seen one at that escalated level of cost. And then I was struggling to find out whether that included airfare. It speaks of transportation, but I didn't know if maybe transportation was ground transportation, but whether that includes airfare or not. In addition, over here on the second page, or the back page of the first page, there's an additional hundred-and-twenty-five-dollar damage deposit, an estimated five-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars for fuel charges and taxes, and a forty-five-dollar fee from the Peruvian government. So that's yet another seven-hundred dollars on top of even the twenty-eight-hundred dollars, which would make it like a three-thousand-five-hundred-dollar one-week program. My concern is that our programs for study be as affordable as possible to be available to as many students as possible. to as many students as possible. We are a community college, we're in a community that attempts to serve working people, and I'm just concerned. The other item that I wanted to inquire about is that this is a three-unit course in one week's time. Do we have other one-week courses where you can earn three units?
I apologize, Trustee, I do not know that answer.
What would accreditation say to something like that, that we're giving three units for one week?
I don't know, but I certainly can find out for you, as well as, I do have an answer for any of your other questions.
Okay.
The travel, it does include travel.
It does, okay.
Transportation to and from, in fact, it says it on page one, international airfare between Los Angeles and Cusco.
Very good. Whereabouts is that in the paragraph?
It's on the Exhibit C, page one. It says program components.
Exhibit C, you say?
Yeah, page one, Exhibit C, after Exhibit.
Okay, but then there is plus that 595, plus 45, plus 125, which is $3,500. Could we maybe send this back for a month and get some answers?
Absolutely.
I would really like to be able to vote and say, this is great, but it just seems that it doesn't address the concern of the board about the broadest availability.
Mm-hmm.
If others have information that can help me with this, I'd love to hear it.
Professor Cosgrove, looks like he wants to speak.
Program, there are meetings, class sessions that take place before the students leave. That's a pattern that we do often have with our travel abroad. I don't know exactly the details of it, but I think that's probably what would constitute some of the additional three hours that the students would acquire credit for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Todd, as well, when you're reviewing this, there are some errors, I think, maybe they're just typos, but in page two of the Exhibit A, the dates of 2008 are listed rather than 2009.
Yeah, kind of would have already passed.
That's right.
Do you want to say? Chancellor?
In light of Trustee Fuentes's comments and President Burnett's comments, I'll be happy to pull this item and bring it back next month.
Thank you.
Motion to table?
Got motion to table, then.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, matter carries unanimously.
No, I said no.
With one no. Unanimously with one no.
Thank you.
Sorry. 5.8, the amendment to the Blackboard contract, pulled by Trustee Padberg.
Yes, I pulled this item. This is an interesting item of some $253,500 to expand what is the Blackboard contract for our online education. And it's a marvelous program. I think it's an awful large item figure number to be on a consent calendar. And I just want to be sure that my understanding is correct, that we are approving an additional $253,000 for this program. What is the original contract and what does that bring us to total?
Deputy Chancellor Porter?
Jim Gaston, I don't know the answer to that, but Jim.
Jim, can you respond to this, please? Jim Gaston is the associate director in the district IT.
Yes, Dr. Bermeucci couldn't be here, so he asked me to be here in case there are any questions. I don't have the exact figures, but you're right, this is an additional amount of money that's being added. Because of the tremendous growth we've had in distance education, we've outgrown the capacity of our current servers, and we're exceeding the contractual agreement we have with Blackboard. For instance, we're contracted to support 15,500 students, we have over 18,000 students. We've exceeded the disk space, the network, everything. So this is going to increase the infrastructure and then also increase the level of service. We're going to have a dedicated hosting manager, so when there are problems, we know there's somebody that'll be on the other end of the line, and they're guaranteed 10 hours a week to do nothing but support our faculty and support our server. And so they'll also be able to take some proactive actions to keep the server tuned. For about the last year, the performance of the Blackboard server has just not been up to the standards that we have, and so this money is going to get us to that place.
So am I correct, then, in understanding that this will not only go for the contract with Blackboard, but also some hardware, server materials that will increase our capabilities?
Yeah, there's going to be some additional servers added. We're going to have an archive server that we can move some of the older materials off of. Faculty will still have access to it, but that way it won't slow down the production server. So we're going to get an additional server out of it, there's going to be some increase in hardware, and then, as I said, also just some increased service for us.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, just as additional follow-up to some of Trustee Padberg's questions, now that I'm looking at this one a little more carefully. What was the original contract with Blackboard? Do you recall?
For the dollar amount? Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have brought that number with me, I don't have that with me.
Okay. The only reason I ask is, obviously, we're expanding the capability now of the system, we're adding a year and a half onto the contract. I'd be interested to know if we received any sort of a pricing break from having expanded with them. Seems like that could be appropriate.
Yes, Dr. Bermeucci did negotiate that with them, and we did get some breaks on some of the pricing that they gave us.
Okay, and we're still convinced, of course, that Blackboard is the best program out there, as opposed to something else that may have come out since, that perhaps is more robust and would serve our needs better.
Yeah, and we're certainly keeping our eye on the available options. There's a number of interesting options that are coming out, and it's particularly in the open source area that are competitors to Blackboard. But we're constantly talking to the faculty, and so far, most of what we're hearing from the faculty is they want to stick with Blackboard, they just want a platform that's much more stable, and so that's what we're shooting for.
Chancellor Mather?
Dr. Bermeucci did talk to me about this thing. He feels very strongly about this agenda item. I think he has done sufficient research to provide a better quality of service to the faculty and students through this Blackboard program. In fact, Blackboard will provide a designated staff person available 24/7 to answer questions of these students and faculty as needed.
Move approval.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, very nice. All right, since I got in trouble last time, let's vote electronically. There we go. Matter carries unanimously with no exceptions. 5.9, this is trustees' requests for attending conferences. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A second? All right, discussion?
I call this item to be pulled, and I'd like it separated, so we can vote on each conference, and I'd like to know the names of the trustees that plan to attend these conferences.
All right, well, the first thing I can do, and that's easy, we'll call, we'll separate them out, and I don't know who has requested, so. Chancellor?
Any trustee who's planning to attend, please so indicate.
I'll attend the Futures Assembly.
Okay.
As will the chancellor, and I believe we're nominated for an award.
I believe this item is only addressing the trustees.
Correct.
So that's all I'm asking about, is the trustees that are going to attend.
Well, you've got a little bonus there.
All right. Any other trustees wishing to attend any of the others? All right, let's vote on the Community College Futures Assembly first.
Yes.
Matter carries with one no vote. Let's vote on the League of Innovations Conference.
Excuse me? Who's attending that?
We've already discussed, nobody seems to fess up and say they want to attend.
Okay.
Vote on the item.
Why are we doing it?
In case somebody changes their mind. Let's vote on the item. Matter carries with one no vote, and same situation with the American Association of Community Colleges. So far, nobody's indicated they want to attend, but they'll have that option. Can you clear it? Thank you, let's vote. And that carries with one no vote. At the request of Trustee Padberg, we will take a five-minute break.
How about?
Yes, sir?
Oh, David. Cookie.
Oh, all right, Trustee Lang. And hang on a moment, if you clear the votes for us, we'll try again in a minute.
First of all.
I'll ask that somebody else replace my second on this item.
Second.
I didn't look fast enough, because I'm not in support of this item.
It has been moved and seconded.
I understand that.
All right, now, go ahead.
I don't believe that this is a wise use of funds on behalf of the district, even though we're spending money, I guess, for discounted legal fees. I believe that there is a better use of our dollars than to be spending this, fighting on this issue, and so I intend to oppose this item, as, again, being a wasteful spending. I believe that this situation is easily solvable in terms of our conduct of the meeting, and replacing, in my view, it would be better to replace the invocation with a thought for the day or silent reflection, and I would be in favor of that. So I, as I said, I intend to oppose this item.
All right. Trustee Padberg.
Well, I don't think we need to be spending these fees for attorneys either. I have a different rationale than does Trustee Lang. I believe that we can say an invocation if we desire, and we don't need to have anyone tell us whether we cannot or can. And in addition, if we want to give a moment of silence or a thought for the day, that's up to the trustee, whose turn it is to make the decision at the invocation time on the agenda.
All right, thank you. Seeing no further requests to speak, let, oh, Trustee Jay.
Well, I disagree with my colleagues on this. You kind of heard my opinion on it when I gave my invocation this evening. I think we should have all the information possible on this. It's an item that I am for. I mean, I'm in favor of an invocation, I'll be very honest with you. I think it lends a formality and a dignity to meetings of this nature, but I would oppose them and would vote yes to accept this.
All right, Trustee Padberg.
We've just heard a report on the state of the economy and the state of our budget, and now we're going to approve an item to pay an attorney $525 an hour. I won't support it.
Seeing no further requests to speak, let's vote on the item.
Tom.
Well, perhaps, now that you've all voted, I was voting to abstain. For some reason, it doesn't take my vote. The reason I'm abstaining is because Professor Eastman is a colleague of mine at the Claremont Institute, has been in the past, and I didn't want to have any indication of impropriety, so I'm abstaining on this vote.
All right. Can you get the results for us? Let's take a, all right, let's try it again. Matter is three to three with an abstention, which in a tie vote counts as a yes, and therefore, the item, I believe, according to our board rules, will pass. There is a no student advisory vote. Item 6.4, the Life Science Architectural Services matter, here for approval. All in favor? I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Is there discussion?
I have a.
You want to discuss?
No. Question on the previous item.
Yes, sir.
I'd like you to verify.
We will, before we pay a dime.
Your conclusion that the abstention counts as a yes vote.
We've been through that a number of times, but we will absolutely look into that before we spend a dime, and that's appropriate.
That should be verified, thank you.
All right. That said, we are at item 6.4, discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.5, Saddleback College Village Expansion Project.
Move approval, second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Let's vote on the item. Matter carries unanimously. 6.6, Saddleback College Village Expansion Project, discussion? Seeing none, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. 6.7, another approval item, faculty hiring list.
Move approval.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, discussion? Seeing none, we vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.8 has been removed at the request of administration and will come back to us. Item 6.9 is the academic calendar, it's here for review and study.
Move acceptance for review and study.
Second.
And discussion amongst my colleagues. Seeing none, let's vote.
Yes, for review and study.
Matter carries unanimously. 6.10 is here again for a review and study.
Move approval.
Second.
Seconded, discussion of this item. Chancellor Mather?
Yes, I would like to pull one particular board policy. The first one, 2001 Administrative Organization. I need additional time for review. Thank you.
I'll accept that amendment to my motion.
All right, so we have, for review and study, all of the policies except 2001, and seeing no one else wishing to speak, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously, as amended. 611, also for review and study.
Move acceptance.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Let's vote on the item. We are approaching, that matter carries unanimously. We are approaching 9:30. I'll entertain a motion for 15 more minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, matter carries unanimously, 15 more minutes, which technically is 9:43, not 9:45. All right, 6.12, here for approval. Any changes, additions? Nothing.
Move approval. Second.
Aye.
All right, let's vote. Matter carries unanimously. Item 6.13, looks clean. Let's vote on item six, I'm sorry, is there a motion?
Second.
All right, let's vote on 6.13. And matter carries unanimously. Item 7.1 is an information item. In a similar form came to us a month or maybe two ago, but it's proposed discussion topics for 2008, 2009. Questions or comments from my colleagues? All right. Very good, that's an information item. 7.2, another information item, basic aid report. Again, questions or comments? Seeing none, let's move to item 7.3, the Facilities Plan Status Report. Matter is accepted for information. Item 7.4, List of Board Requested Reports. An item here for information, no questions. All right, 7.5 is the Quarterly Investment Report, another information item. All right, 7.6, Trustee Expenditure Report, and this is an item here for information. And Trustee Padberg?
I asked for this report, and I'm going to request that this come back. I need to spend some time with staff who prepared this to get some questions answered, so I'd like this to come back to the next meeting.
All right, let me inquire of the chancellor, I assume that's not a problem?
No, not a problem.
All right. And let me take a moment to commend Trustee Williams for his attendance in a number of these items and has brought back some very useful information to all of us. I do, I think I speak on behalf of almost all of the board when I say thank you for your service.
Not me.
That's why I said almost all. Item 7.7 is the District-Owned Cell Phone Report, and also an information item, discussion? Seeing none. We will go to item eight, which is the reports from the constituent groups. Let me start with President Burnett. Let me start with President Burnett.
Thank you very much, President. Real quick, because I know we're on a short timeframe here, but we didn't get an opportunity last time to talk, so something happened very important last, about a month ago that I want to highlight. I think you'll be very proud, very proud of our athletic department, that you might have seen the press release where we donated saddleback college jerseys to nine girl soccer teams in Africa, in West Africa. I think it's a wonderful thing to do, I was very proud of our athletic department, and it's thrilling to see that saddleback colleges thriving over in Africa. Also, speaking along with athletics, I did want to let you know and invite you all, the football team just this weekend qualified, won their game, became second place, and will be going to the eighth consecutive bowl game. And that'll be playing El Camino College on Saturday at 6:00 PM, and the chancellor and I actually will both be attending, as well as many others from the saddleback community. So if any of you would like to, no, it's actually at El Camino. But if you'd like to come, let me know, so we can make sure you get properly taken care of with tickets and things like that. So let me or the chancellor know about that. We're also very proud that our men's and women's cross-country teams both placed eighth in the recent regionals, and they also are qualifying for the state championship, which is November 22 in Fresno. Also, water polo, men's water polo team actually qualified for the regional playoffs recently and won their first round game, but unfortunately fell to the top-seeded Golden West College in the end. But we're very thrilled and proud of our water polo team as well. As you might have heard, I know as mentioned earlier from the chancellor, we had a wonderful Veterans Day celebration, and truly absolutely inspiring. And our chief, Harry Palmer, put that on along with our Veterans Outreach Office, and absolutely, just truly special. I wish you all could have been there. They had a veteran from each of the wars going past. In addition to that, Clark Jarrett, if you remember, is our alumni of the year, produced a documentary, and they showed it on his great-grandfather in World War I, which was truly special as well. Real quick, this last week, we had, as you know, the Great Southern California Shakeout. And in that shakeout, on Thursday, we had a duck holden cover drill throughout the entire campus and evacuated, including this building, including the district office, for, in the event of a simulated 7.8 earthquake. Then on Friday, we had an Emergency Operations Center drill with all of the campus leadership down in our EOC. God forbid if we were to activate that, but it was a tremendous half-a-day training as well. In fact, I have a little memento for all of you. If you notice a weird-looking pack that was sitting on your chairs. These used to be called C rations or K rations. Now they're called MRE, and none of us know what that stands for. But these are actually meals. We at Saddle, what is it? Meals Ready to Eat. Have you had this before? Is it good? Anyway, these are compact meals, and just to let you know, you don't have to go home and rush home and eat it tonight, because it has a 30-year shelf life. And it's just, so hopefully we'll never have to eat them. But we have many of these in Saddleback, just to let you know, in a case of emergency, one of the many things that we're doing here in preparation for, hopefully, not a emergency in the future. In addition to that, tomorrow night, we have Family Night here at the campus. We invite you and anybody else that you know to come on out. It's from 5:30 to 8:00 PM in room 212. And as you know, it's a wonderful event to get all of our students in the community an extra jump start on the next year's academic calendar. That's my report, real quickly.
Thank you, sir. And President Rockmore.
Well, to start with, I would like to thank our board president, Don Wagner, for joining me at the POD exercise. That means Point of Dispensing, and it was a, an exercise for a pandemic or some sort of biological threat that we might experience. It went very well, and the four of us got up, as trustee Wagner had mentioned, and the toughest part of all of that was rolling our sleeves up over these biceps, right? But we were, we were being watched and ready to have that needle injected there. It was kind of interesting. But we did serve about 1,500 injections, and everything went smoothly. The Veterans Day program, I think, went very, very well. I would like to thank the chancellor for speaking there. And we heard Professor Frank Pangborn tonight at the dedication for this room was also singing at the veterans' event and has played a key role in establishing that recognition that has gone on for well over 10 years now. So we really appreciate that. We also got involved in the shakeout. We opened up the EOC, we evacuated the Student Services Building and tested ourselves, and it all worked out pretty well. We certainly hope we do not see that 7.8 earthquake, because it will be devastating. And based on my background, unfortunately, I think we will see that earthquake at some point. If you get the opportunity, the 1940s Radio Hour is an excellent play that's going on in the theater. Will be playing Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. If you get a chance and you'd like to go, let me know. I'll get you tickets for that complimentary. But here's an opportunity. This is a good one. I really recommend it.
Thank you. And acting provost, Daly.
Thank you. I wanted to take an opportunity on behalf of all the ATEP staff to welcome Dr. Randy Peoples, and also to thank the chancellor and all of you for an amazing three months as acting associate provost. I'm going to take just a second and make this personal. This has been such a unique experience. It's very rare that a public affairs director throughout the state has been given such a leadership opportunity, and it's helped me understand the colleges better, and I can't wait to get back. I also wanted to thank President Rockmore, who's been my direct supervisor, Dr. Burnett, both vice presidents of instruction, who have taken me under their wing and provided a lot of the mentoring. Also, I just want to thank Kathy, Don, Terri Flugman, who's filled in as director of Public Affairs for me, Matt, Bev, Maria, Raj, Ray, John, Will, Brett, Jackie, Rick, Mike, and Larry. Those are all the wonderful staff at ATEP. It's a great team, and I know they're going to continue to work real hard on our behalf. Thank you.
Thank you very much. President Gabriella.
Good evening. I'm pleased to report, I have no report.
President Cosgrove.
Well, I have one for her. At the recent California State Fall Plenary Session.
She's going to be as long-winded as Lee was, right?
There was an art display of figures that were provided by a school in Northern California, and they're life-size figures, not actual representative bodies. But they had faces that were imprinted of actual students, and on the backside were the, identified the school and identified why that student thought the particular school they went to. Now, the 32 figures that were there, four were directly connected to IVC. And I wrote up what is on there. I have some pictures, and I'll write a formal report and give it to Glenn and to others. Five officers from Saddleback were there, and two officers were Wendy and the vice president, Kathy Smidler, attended, and we divided up the meeting so we'd get as much coverage as possible. The second point is that Saddleback this year instituted a new faculty orientation, and so through the semester, we've been meeting with the new faculty members. And in order to be cost-effective, we've been videotaping these, because next year, when we have a smaller group coming in, we'll be able to use those videos and not take the time of Harry Palmer to come talk about safety issues, or people from A&amp;R, or Student Services, or the health clinic, or throughout the area where we have tried to solve problems before they crop up. And that will be available then for next year. The last issue is a resolution that was passed at the last Senate meeting, and the members of the representative body moved and unanimously approved that the district, that we send a, I sent a letter to the college president, the chancellor, the faculty association, and student government classified association, and request each of these to study, debate, and approve that Saddleback College become a smoke-free campus. I have a number of letters from parents, from students, and I will provide these, some examples to you next time. There are 130 schools currently, at least the figure I was able to find, that are smoke-free environments. And if you read some of the letters from parents especially, and from some of the students who are suffering reaction to smoke, you would be, as we all are, I think, sensitive to the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Professor Hagerty.
Thank you. Just a quick couple of points. First of all, I'd like to just give congratulations to our 44th president, the newly-elected president-elect of the United States, Barack Obama, and especially in a newly-named boardroom after former President Reagan. I'd also like to congratulate my board of trustee members for their successful reelection. I look forward to working with those board members in regards to protecting the rights of faculty members and making our two institutions better here in the district. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Williams, you're up.
I would like to volunteer that any, when any of the board members have their plates of cookies ready to go, if you let me know, I'll be happy to pick them up and deliver them for you. I also would like to acknowledge that I had the opportunity to go to Washington, D.C. for a couple of conferences. It was the first time I'd ever been there. It was amazing, and I'm glad you guys got your flu shots, because I think I brought back every East Coast germ that there was available. And my final point is, this Seattle girl doesn't feel at all sorry for you UCLA fans.
When did you last win a game?
I don't think any Seattle team has won a game in 2008.
I'm sorry, trustee Lang. Oh, okay.
I have no.
Does Morehouse know? Report, great.
The only one I have is Patsy Emmert, who is an IVC classified employee and is going to retire, has been with this district for 29 years, which is a long time to do anything. And her retirement party is going to be on Wednesday of this week, and I hope that some of you could come. It sure would be appreciated if you could maybe even have something to say on our behalf. It's at 3:00 on Wednesday, and it's in the PAC building, in the lobby of the PAC building.
Thank you very much. Folks, we stand, oh, trustee Lang now. Now trustee Lang.
Didn't want to acknowledge Tracy Daly for the terrific job that you've done as acting provost at ATEP. We very much appreciate your efforts. Second, I'd like to donate back my MREs to President Burnett for use in emergency food needs. And third, I'd like to consider, if you would, adjourning the meeting tonight in honor of our people in the fire department, the police, and other emergency responders that have responded to recent fires in Southern California.
Great suggestion. Good call, was what trustee Williams said, absolutely. And a hearty thank you to all of those fine, fine folks. We stand adjourned.